And I'm going to pass the time this way, too. I'd like to introduce Mr. Richard Hunt, Commander for the State Military Order of the Purple Heart. And also, Mr. Richard Bud Allen, Commander of the Erinae Weaver Chapter 776 Military Order of the Purple Heart. And they're going to do the opening exercises for us.
Welcome, all. It's my distinct honor to be here, and I have to brag once more on our county. This school board, this district, is not only the first, but to the best of my knowledge and belief, the only school board in the entire United States that's formerly a Purple Heart School Board. That and the Wall of Honor that's outside speaks volumes for who and what we are here. With that said, would you please rise, face the flag, non-veterans uncover? And salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and protestance for all. Two, please be seated. Thank you so very much for having us.
Thank you.
I did not want to take you off too early.
Move to, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Citizens comments? Do we have any green cards at this time?
No.
We have no green cards at this time. There is a second opportunity, and I'm looking today, I believe it is at 5:45, for any item on that. Before I continue, I just want to send, Ms. Hamel sends her regrets about missing today's meeting. She is in Tallahassee today, and she was asked to give some positive testimony at the Capitol with Educational Chairman Senator Legg, Apple executives, at the FASA event and press conference. Citrus County was asked to be one of five districts to have participated in a project to share about our iPad one-to-one. The Senate Educational Committee and the Department of Education has recognized Citrus County, both in the state and the nation, as being a model when it comes to our one-to-one iPad learning. And Ms. Hamel, along with several, along with, I'm sorry, one of our individual educators, Mr. Dan Koch, was asked to participate and share today. Mr. Koch actually was developing some iTunes apps. So, one of the things last night was Ms. Hamel had an opportunity to meet with the Apple executives, and she had shared with them, and I wanted to share with you all today, that one-to-one integration is not about technology or hardware. It's about good teaching. It's about individualized instruction, and it's about what's doing best for students. And I thought that was an excellent thing for her to share. So, we'll miss her today, but I understand Mr. Mullin was here to take care of any of our questions, and also Mr. Carter will be able to help us. With that, we will move on to, I believe, Mr. Bishop.
Bishop.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Powers. It is, it's on the next page. If I can have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. And, yeah, thank you. Ms. Linda, would you recognize, and I think this month we have quite a few donations, so if you can mention them?
We have a long list today. We were very gracious to them. We have $1,200 donation to Elkhanto High School from the Quonix Public Fund as a spring. A $15,000 donation to Marine Science Station from the Weldon Enterprises Inc. A $500 donation to Marine Science Station from Steve's Rowland. A $750 donation to Marine Science Station from Coastal Camp Citrus. A $50 donation to Marine Science Station from Ted Williams Museum and Hitter Hall of Fame Inc. To accept funding from Swift Med in the amount of $3,008 per week for up to three weeks of camp, not exceed $9,240, and to accept the requirements from Swift Med, as highlighted in the attached document. A $2,500 donation to Crystal River Primary School from Save Crystal River Inc. A $500 donation to Ole Miss Elementary School from West Citrus Ladies of the Alps. A $12,200 donation to Citrus Springs Elementary School from the Citrus Springs Elementary School PTO. A $500 donation to Citrus Springs Elementary School from Save Crystal River Inc. A $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Crystal Otters. A $2,000 donation to Citrus High School from the Sultan Management Group. A $500 donation to Elkhanto Primary School from Exxon Mobil Corporation. That is our donation to Citrus.
Thank you. And thank you to our community for again supporting our students. Now, I think we're moving on to Mr. Bishop. Good afternoon, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I would like to request the board's approval of instructional and support recommendations. Does that matter on the order line?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve instructional and support recommendations. Just give us an extra second here. Is there any comments or questions before we move on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
My next agenda item is to request the board's approval of Callie Haynes, Assistant Principal of CREST, effective July 1, 2015.
With approval.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve Callie Haynes, Assistant Principal of CREST, effective July 1, 2015. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Haynes. Thank you. We are blessed to have you, and we won't take any points out for not bringing Congress late.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Calasante. And I talked to Mr. Calasante earlier, and we agree that this weekend was an exceptional Red Sox baseball weekend because we're not counting Sunday.
We're actually not looking that at all. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Bradshaw, members of the board. I'm here this afternoon to ask for your approvals for replacement of district-wide floor coverings. It was brought to my attention that perhaps I wasn't as specific in that motion as it should be, so I would like to amend that and say as prioritized. So, we have to say approve replacement of district-wide floor coverings as prioritized.
I make the request for replacement of district-wide floor coverings as prioritized.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve...
Ms. Balfour.
I'm sorry, Ms. Balfour, thank you. To approve replacement of district floor coverings, and what was the amendment?
As prioritized.
As prioritized. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Doug. No, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Motion carries five zero. No worries, I just wanted to make sure I gave you the opportunity. Thanks.
Next, I would like to ask for approval, request approval for furniture purchase and installation for the ESE department. I would like to say that this is a project that was scheduled a number of years ago when it was ongoing with the air conditioning renovation, and it was felt at that time that there was just too much going on to finish in the summertime, so it was delayed. At this time, we were going to do the carpet at the same time, and we are going to move forward with the carpet this year, but it just seems as though it would be beneficial in this most optimal time to change the furnishing.
I make the motion to approve the furniture purchase and installation for the ESE department.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve furniture purchase and installation for the ESE department. Any more questions or comments?
Yes, I had some questions regarding this. This financial impact was at $85,000, almost $86,000, and it wasn't a budget item, and I just wanted to have some discussion so I understood exactly where we were with spending this money at this time. And I understand that the district office has had some upgrades at the other departments, and the previous board had voted for the ESE department to have upgraded furniture three years ago, is that correct? Or was there, was there a vote?
If you could...
I'm not sure if they could say that it was voted on at that point.
It was in the budget. Also, one of the other issues that you caused on... It was about the Duke Energy when they reduced their payment. Then also then it reflected back on the capital budget to see what projects we could reduce out of the budget at that time to make up the difference for the non-payment, and that was one of the projects that was taken out. It was wrapped up into the air conditioning, this new chiller system that we did here. It was all amongst that whole project, but that was removed just to save some dollars based on the capital budget and the non-payment for Duke Energy.
And how many people are affected? How many employees are affected by this?
Ms. Haynes is here, she would like to, how many people she has down there?
I anticipate that question, but we have nine school psychologists, seven in our leadership team, three secretaries. We have occupational therapists, physical therapists, our lead speech pathologist. We have some teachers on special assignment for, a teacher on special assignment for behavior. Is anybody tallying that for me?
And those are all in the middle area? Or do these, some of these have offices on the side as well? This is only for like the...
Daily use.
This is only for the interior of building?
Correct. There is one renovation to the end room that used to, originally in this building, be a conference room. We moved, we changed that into several desk areas because of crowding. We'd like to make that back into a conference room because we have a very small conference room, and we've made accommodations for staff, but the offices themselves would remain the way they are. We hope to be able to get Julia the chair because she's never had one, but other than that, we'll live with our desks and the rest of the things in the offices that are fixed.
Okay, and I'm still not sure, how many cubicle, these is, this is for kind of like cubicle-type furniture, correct?
Correct.
And I guess, my better state, how many people will be in those cubicles is what I want to know. I don't really want to know how many people you have in your department.
Well, it is the number of people that work out of our department. So, again, it was three secretaries, nine school psychologists, thank you, Ms. Bryant, two administrators, teacher on special assignment for behavior, four district specialists, Laura Lohner, Martha Henkel, Darlene Hessler, our teacher of the hearing impaired, two teachers of the visually impaired. I don't believe we have any interpreters that have a desk in our space. So, we do have twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you. I was counting.
And when I walked through, when I looked at this current setup, though, are they all the same ones in the cubicles? Some just have desks, but there are cubicle, there's module furniture in there now, correct?
Yes. It's the furniture that was there when this building opened, and we have pieces and parts that we've put together, patched together. We've got things that are falling off some of the cubicles.
Okay, so that was my other question, is when or how old is that existing furniture? I mean, it looks like it's still in pretty good shape, but it is 24 years old? Okay. So, the other, is that the last, is this the last section of this building to be retrofitted or refitted or...
Correct. It was the last office.
Okay, and so while it wasn't budgeted this year, it was budgeted in a prior year?
That's correct. It was budgeted in the air conditioning project a few years ago. Due to the fact that we want to do the carpet, we need to do carpet, we need to bring...
Okay.
Well, I would like to add that, because we'll, there is a financial impact. The financial impact is that the price has gone up in the last three years, and it's gone up almost 10% for the furnishings itself. Plus, if we take the cubicles out now and do the carpet, it's the savings there, it costs us $4,000 less, because we would take all the furnishings and go into a reinstallation, so.
So, the plan is to take all the furniture out, and then we...
Do the carpet, then the cubicles go back.
Right, so if everything were to stay, then you'd have to, it costs $4,000 more on the floor coverings.
Correct, we're going to move forward with the floor covering.
So, there's a...
It causes additional $4,000.
And this work is done by OEC Business Interiors, I mean, they actually install, so this is...
What we will do is, from maintenance, we will disconnect the power to the cubicles. They will install all new cubicles, and we'll just reconnect the power to those cubicles. But all the wiring that already runs through the cubicles, whether it's just the initial connection at the different power poles.
I just had a little simple question. So, on the, let's see, on the third page, does furnishings, like cover everything, because I know it says something about a receiving door overhead and a ceiling ten feet cable, and that's seem like furnishings, but when you say the word furnishings, are you meaning everything that you're going to touch there or...
That's all coming from that same company. All that is being supplied. You've got overhead cabinets that are there, it's not just cubicle walls, it's the cabinets that come with it, it's the fabric, it's the glass that may be there for the cubicle, it's the wiring that's inside of it, it's all part of it, and that's why it's all listed out that way. So, everything you see on that list is coming from the furnishings company.
I see. Thank you.
You know, I would like to say this for the board. You know, for me, this seemed kind of expensive for furniture. I know that there's been this retrofit and this planned before, that was previously approved in the budget. My point is that I would rather see these items budgeted so that we plan for it for the year. I understand there's been some cost savings in other projects that will account for this spending, but that is, you know, I would like to hope that we can see these items during the budget time.
Just so you know, Mr. Dodd brings up a good point. We did have a saving of about $600,000 on our Citrus Springs building, school roofing. That was another reason why we, once we were doing this, we had that savings that we had previously budgeted in there to bring here to do this furniture upgrade or remodel for the furniture. So, we were kind of taking advantage of that savings at this time.
Oh, and that was, I mean, we'd already approved it, we just had to back off, springs from Duke. So, it's something that was brought before the board approved at one point in time, and we just had, we agreed to back burner that project. So, I do appreciate the fact that you did not forget the ESE department and their needs. And it's hard to look down the hall and see everybody else with the brand-new carpet. I definitely understand that, but I do just want to remind those that are listening that we did approve this at the prior budget meeting, and Duke throws a curveball, so I appreciate it. And now, at this point, it is up for grabs as far as our opportunity to either approve or deny, so that we can take action at this point. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback and thank you, Ms. Balfour, for saying that. Yeah, Ms. Doug, this has been budgeted. We just had to make some very tough decisions. We had to take a lot off of our budget, and when we now, we've pretty much said, as we get those, we need to get those things done. So, this is something that was completely on our radar. This is not something we didn't plan for. It just happens to be how it's going to fit in. And when we're budgeting a budget year, just like we wouldn't have if we didn't have the money, we wouldn't have done a project like we didn't with Duke Energy. As we find savings, then we need to go back and take care of things that we do. I will tell you, I was in the ESE yesterday and happened to walk in as one of the pieces of furniture fell out in front of me and almost tripped. So, it wasn't that it was intentional, Mr. Calasante, I don't mean to, but I mean, it's, this is old furniture, and I think sometimes we don't realize, office furniture, module furniture, it is not inexpensive furniture because it does last for those many years. My question, I'm confused maybe a little bit at this point, is this being remastered or planned? Because there is space there now where a hallway has like six feet to eight feet, and an office area has narrower than that. So, I was hoping that part of this was going to be to remaster, plan some of those modules.
When it was done, yes, at that time, I got with Ms. Haynes and Ms. Kelsey, and they went over the plans with them, we all looked at it, and they created the spaces that they needed. So, it's redone, it's not going to look exactly the same as what you have there now.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad. And Ms. Haynes and Ms. Julie, they're more appropriate for what the work that you're doing there now than they currently are, because what they currently are does not seem to entirely meet your needs. Okay.
Right, and Ms. Kelsey, I mean, my point again was that, when I looked at the budget for this year, I didn't see this in this year's budget. So, it was not approved for this year's budget, it's not in there, but it was approved in a plan three years ago that had to be cut because of a lack of revenue. And that's what I, what I see is that's happened. So, my point is that when we have major projects like this, I would like to see that planned in the budget process, and that was my point to bring that up. I understand, and I'm going to support this because I understand that the board, it was a part of the plan, okay, and it was just, money's available now to take and put that back into effect. Had that not been the case, then that would be more of an issue with me, is what I, that's the reason I brought that point up.
And I don't disagree with that, Mr. Dodd, I think it would be with all of us. That's what I'm saying. Just understand, we will always have budget amendments like this, where we weren't able to budget for something, and then something changes, and then we're able to readdress that. And I would hope this board wouldn't be so rigid to say, if it wasn't in the budget this year, we're not doing it this year. That's just not typically, we do what we need to do. And there's some years we have to cut what we're doing in the middle of it, and unfortunately, that's been more than norm. This has been a little bit more of an unusual to be able to do this, and part of that, I'll say, is again, Citrus Springs Middle School's roof has been a positive situation for the capital budget, so. And Mr. Dodd, please understand, we appreciate, we want you to keep doing that. It's just, I think we've lived through some of these where we've had to go in the reverse direction, so to be able to correct some of these that we had is, I think, favorable to this board. So, is there anything else? With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And I believe we're at budget update?
I believe Mr. Dixon should...
Oh, Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry, sir.
Advertising?
Yes. With that, Mr. West, did you want to go ahead and chime in real quick?
Yeah, prior to y'all approving it, because I need to strike out the sentence out of the policy in paragraph on page three, section... It would be 2B5. Need to strike out the sentence that says addition in our school board policy 6.10, naming a school facility is only the school board has the authority to name a facility operated by the district, because we don't have a policy on naming facilities. I'm not quite sure how they had in there. Outside of that, if you could move to approve it, with that, the sentence being deleted, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, I think there may be some other comments on this particular one to set the public hearing, but can we set the public hearing with those?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is just a request to set the public hearing for policy 9.40, advertisers permitted to advertise.
They would need to make any modifications to it, then approve it for the public hearing.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to advertise for a public hearing at the June 9, 2015 school board meeting to adopt the new policy 9.40, advertisers permitted to advertise.
A second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve request to advertise for a public hearing at the June 9, 2015 school board meeting to adopt the new policy 9.40, advertisers permitted to advertise, striking as recommended by the attorney. Any comments?
Yes, I...
I have a difficult one with it. The whole scenario of advertising on websites, on school sites, I think that there needs to be something, there needs to be some way to be able to write a policy that says, yes, if people want to support the school system and they want to put their name on something to say they support, that's fine, but I think putting signs, plastering across the campus is not a good thing to do. And I really didn't feel strongly about this until last week when I went to the school and I saw a couple of signs just placed where, I guess, I don't know who elected to place them there, why they said to place them there, but I found that that was not, to me, the correct thing to do. It became not artistic, not a part of the campus, something like a sore thumb standing out, and nothing about the people or companies that advertised, just the fact that it was there, like hanging in the middle of nowhere on a banner that was a plastic banner. I don't find acceptable. So, I think some more added to this policy to clarify and to make it uniform throughout the system. I don't disagree with advertising as such, but I do disagree with it on website, but I think it has to be uniform and a good taste and something that is acceptable to everyone. I think it should be reviewed, too, by people saying, yes, it's acceptable, this is in line with what the other schools are doing. Mr. Dixon?
Right, and Ms. Powers had contacted me about, just right before the meeting, about this, and I explained to her that not having a policy doesn't mean you can't advertise. So, the reason to have a policy is so that you can make sure that it's done properly and in accordance with the school board's intended policy. So, with that, I don't know whether, Mr. Bradshaw, we want to have another workshop or do we, whether we want to do...
What? I was going to say, I think that, first of all, Mr. Dodd had some comments, I think we hear that next. Did you still did, Mr. Dodd? I'm sorry.
In reference to A, 1A, and B, the two types of non-commercial paid advertising, congratulatory supportive statements for students and advertisements purchased by the parents, families, and friends, and statements is important for Citrus County school students and programs, and advertisements purchased by local civic or community organizations. So, I take it that a church is a charitable advertiser, that's in A, is that correct? It says we'll permit commercial and charitable advertisers, so a church is a charitable advertiser is where I would put that. Is that correct?
I agree.
Not a community organization, correct?
Probably not a community organization.
Okay, thank you.
But the purpose of the policy, though, is to give us, give the board an opportunity to set some boundaries. At this point, you have people advertising out in yearbooks, they're advertising on, with their banners at football field stadiums, against the walls at the basketball games. So, the purpose of having this policy really gives us a tool to help.
I think this came about not because of the traditional types of advertising during sporting events and yearbooks and that kind of thing, but because of the internet and the fact that the schools are starting to use those kind of venues for advertising, and they're not doing it the same way.
I agree with you, Ms. Balfour. What it also does is it sets some restrictions on advertising so that you know certain things you cannot promote, which are listed in there, you know. You know, you can't promote, there's a whole, there's a list that's in there. And it's, I think it's also designed to make sure there's uniformity in the district on the advertising so that, you know, one high school doesn't allow an organization to advertise, but another high school won't, you know, so, I mean, it goes through a committee process if the committee says it can be advertised, and it can be advertised. So, I think it makes it more uniform on how it's going to be district-wide, how advertising's going to be treated.
Mention of the discretion of the principal at each school. The principal of each school would say, yes, that's a good advertisement, put that up.
Insert there.
Don't you think it should be tightened a bit where Citrus County could say, okay, let's put a 100 by 100 foot banner up there, and LeCantos, I'm sorry, no, only five feet by two feet. There should be some, yeah, consistency and uniformity. That's what, to me, just...
It says advertising on individual school websites and/or the individual school webpages or other websites, whether that's for fundraising, it shouldn't be permitted, but expressly authorized with the content of the funding.
There was some conversation, I know, during policy reforms that happened to do with logistics of a principal being able to say, you know... of a principal being able to say, you know, okay, can I make that decision or am I going to have to go to a committee every time? For example, the yearbook, if I have an advertising at that. And it was trying to find a... It was recognizing exactly your concern, Ms. Powers, but trying to find some balance there. And one other thing, too, if I recall, Mr. Bradshaw, part of this was because we had an incident during election season and we had no policy that protected someone from throwing pamphlets on vehicles, cars, putting it out there. Because there was no violation of it. Now, there is a violation if it's an employee, if it's one of us, if it's... But there isn't for the general public to come and just basically solicit. Because whether it's a political or if it's any solicitation, we've had that same instances with karate outfits that have come in and, you know, they put things and that's been the, I think, Mr. Bradshaw said, we were vulnerable.
I think always as a, within each school system, we all have that packet of papers that go out on Friday afternoon. There's so many different parts of our community that want to reach our students and reach our faculty. I really do support the idea of being able to have a policy that staff can refer to so that they have something that they can use as a guideline. So I...
This is different than that because this is actually paid advertising.
Well, that's, but my point by bringing that up is we, in the past, have always allowed almost an un, well, ungoverned access to a very viable source of revenue, our staff and our students. So with that, I think it's a good thing that if we're going to give access, that we take the opportunity to go ahead and put a fee, whatever that fee, however that's determined. Now, I see a lot of wiggle room for the opportunity to tweak this policy as we move forward. But I definitely feel we need to have a policy so that staff has something in their hands to be able to implement this. But for us to continue to disseminate information to, you know, a nice revenue source for people, I think it's the right thing to do. We're always asking for funds. This is a great way we can give back.
I agree that we need to have a policy, absolutely. I want a policy. I just think maybe it should be a tighter policy. And I'm thinking in my mind about, say, going to a website where you go to a website and suddenly all these things you check. You have to click and have them go away.
That's a plan.
Totally have to do with advertisement, valid advertising.
That's covered in here. You cannot have it redirected to, you can't have a third party.
No, I mean, the same thing, like if I have Coca-Cola and then the advertising comes on for more Coca-Cola.
Well, and I definitely understand what you're saying. We can learn from the Chronicle with their, they have a rate sheet for their different sizes for their web advertising. So we can have consistency from that respect. I understand the need for consistency. Definitely when you're dealing with rates. So we can kind of piggyback off of what they do in the business world to help establish that. But I think if we get too far in the weeds within the drafting of the policy, that we may shut down some creative thinking when it comes to maximizing the opportunity that's there. So...
I don't think that advertising or making money, or whatever you want, college, supersede the education. Like the feeling of education. And I do not want to drive up to a school and see a fence full of advertisements, no matter how grand they are, no matter how wonderful they are. It's still not the school atmosphere if you're at a gauntlet of advertisements. And that's what's beginning. I see it already beginning what will happen with school pledge there when we have banners for thirty, forty, fifty businesses lining up on fences. It's not a good idea. I think it has to be restricted more to the place the advertisements take place. Would you like a banner going across the library saying, drink Coke? No matter how much you like Coke, I like Coke. But I don't want that.
I think we did restrict it so that it doesn't... Let's look at that. I think that's at the principal's discretion where...
That's what I mean. I think maybe the principals need a little more protection, a little more, some guidelines so they're not the bad guys. You know, you kind of want you to put there, they can point, say, well, the policy says...
Well, one of the approval requirements at the end says, any advertisement at a school site, at a school activity or in a school publication shall be approved by the principal slash superintendent. So obviously, the principal underneath that policy right there can say, we're not putting it up there. We're going to place it in this location, the superintendent of the location. I'll be more than happy if y'all want to, you know, take, pull this back or do whatever to, whatever, you know, it's your policy. Do whatever you want to do.
Well, we can, go ahead, Mr. Dott.
Well, the senior citizen obviously can direct the principal if they don't like where a signage is to move it. I mean, that's still something that can be done.
What we can do is we have two, we can, we have a motion and a second. We can vote it. If it votes down, we can, you know, then decide to pull it back and do that. Or if, you know, or if it votes forward, it goes forward. So if there's nothing else, I would like to give Ms. Powers one more opportunity to be able to make her case. Because I think she's the one right now in that. So I'd say if there's no objection to that, unless somebody else has something else to say before that, then I'd say, Ms. Powers, go ahead and make your case.
To us comes the request that the principals need some more direction. They don't want it just put in their lap and they need a uniformity of direction from the board on something like this that covers everything in the county, not just our school. So I'd like to see it not dumped in the lap of the principal, I'd see a policy made of the board making policy. And I'd like to see it to be a tight policy and a policy that welcomes advertisements, support of the school system, but does not welcome all advertisements that might be, might take away from the atmosphere of education. Like I felt a couple that I saw last week took away from the milieu of the school, the atmosphere of the school and I felt like I was more or less in a corporate building reading their walls. I wasn't at a school site thinking about education. So I would like to see it tight. Now, one policy absolutely has to be there, one that can be uniform throughout the county to help those people to follow a policy in each school that won't bear up the school to school. You know, like under a hundred signs or five by five signs. We have the same type of thing. And I want to see one that enhances education rather than diminishes education. And I think signs often replace diminish education.
If we tighten it, that would be good. That would be really good. I just don't want to... I mean, I go to the baseball floor and I see signs. They support baseball, you know?
And you love that. You love it.
I think it's great. It's awesome.
But in the words, it's good taste always and supportive of education.
I just don't want to dump something else on our principals or our teachers. So if we can tighten it, where it's easy to understand. Because I don't want our principals to have to do another thing.
Well, are they, are the principals, have they been consulted? Have they given you feedback that they want to have have a more restricted bullet point type format for what can and what can't be done? Boundaries. They want some boundaries. Well, if we, at least give them this foundation to build upon, we can pull it back at any time and bring it back in front of the board and we can tweak it based on what the needs are.
There's issues that come up. We can certainly address them as we go and adjust the policy to make those issues. You know, every school is also different in the sense that somewhere out in the county, somewhere in city limits, some have ordinances that they have to adhere to, some do not. So there's not going to be one form that's going to fit everybody where they can put a sign, one size fits all. I'm sorry. So it's going to be very, it's a...
You're being challenged to...
Yes, to challenge to have one size fits all for schools that have different ordinances that they have to comply with. We work with the city of Crystal River. We work with the city of Membrenas. La Canto is just in the county.
Do you understand what I'm saying, though, giving principals another fucking thing to do?
Well, they're really, they're doing, they're doing that now. There aren't, yeah, there aren't complaints about doing that. They've just, where this really started was, as Mr. Bradshaw said, with the websites and school principals wanting to know, what can we do with the websites? What can't we do with the websites? And we just felt like there, and I think Mr. Kennedy mentioned another issue, that, you know, we were surprised that our policies didn't prevent someone from being able to come onto the school campus and campaign. So I think this is a good start. Certainly, Ms. Powers will continue to look at it and try to, as there's issues come up, try to address those issues. If this is, if the board approves this, we'll continue to address it as we go forward. We look at policies, every policy every year. We can look at this even more frequently than that if you want to to see what kind of issues come up from it.
The latest question we got was somebody wanted to develop an app for sports teams for the district and have advertising within the app where the sports teams get. That's the latest thing I've heard.
And again, if I recall, the policy, it reads, it does provide parameters for what those, for existent rolling ads. They have to meet the other standards of our advertising policy.
Also, there's a whole approval section in here. So any advertising on electronic media operated by the school board has to go through a committee process to make sure that it's acceptable underneath the policy. Advertisements at school sites or a school publication approved by the principals, which they're already doing now. But now they're going to have the guidelines of the policy to show what's acceptable and prohibited. Advertisements at, you know, the district service center or the, you know, other buildings that are, you know, school sites are approved by the superintendent and everything must be done in compliance. So there's a guideline, guidelines to it. So anything that's going to go up on the webpage, it's going to be included in the committee. That helps.
So I can design anything I want, any sign I want. And I can say, place them around the school, like the school, like this is it. I could do my own sign and have it placed there. And there aren't any guidelines for that.
There are guidelines for that because there's in section, page four and seven. Page four and seven, advertising content cannot be false, deceptive, misleading, promoting...
Right, I understand that. But how about any good taste guidelines?
Contain nudity. It can't contain nudity, sexuality, indecent behavior, promote escort business, dating services. Cannot, images cannot have violence, contain threats, harassing, discriminating. And I think it's the standard... I would agree that I think that we have a situation where we have nothing right now. And I think having something as a starting point, and I definitely would agree, Ms. Powers. I don't think, you know, we've thought of everything here. We haven't. Because I, and I think some of this, like the app, from the time we started this to now, I don't even think that we'd have thought an app was a, was even something we thought about. So I, if we ask the superintendent to monitor this and if we see that we need to pull it before them, then we need to do that. And in the meantime, I think we need to let the principals see how this is working. And if they do find it's overwhelming or something, then we need to pull it back and do something different.
They're being asked all the time to disseminate information, to post things. It's not anything new as far as the burden for administrative staff to have people coming in. Can I give these out to each one of your counselors? Can I disseminate this information to all of our students? It is a constant issue. So at least if we start somewhere and give some guidelines out there to give those that are on the front lines some teeth, you know, something to reference, I think it's a great starting point.
I don't like that we have nothing. So I think if we have something, then we, and then I think we do that. So if there's no other, for the moment, I'm going to go ahead and then call the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with Ms. Powers descending.
Can we strike out that one sentence?
Yes.
That'd be four to one.
I'm sorry?
Four to one.
Four, I'm sorry, four to one with Ms. Powers descending. Thank you. Budget update?
Yes, sir. What I handed you out is the comparison of the runs for the budget as compared to the third calculation. You can see the four columns there. You see the third calculation is currently working off of the fourth. It's not come in yet. It'll come in sometime this month. You see the governor's recommended budget and the senate and the house. And if you look at it compared to the third calc, of course, the governor's budget, which I went over with you at the last budget workshop, is about three and a half million dollars more than we're currently receiving. The senate, unfortunately, is about one point seven and then the house is two and a half million more. So a little bit of differences there from what the governor had requested and also a little bit of differences between the two houses. The one thing you'll notice is on the digital classroom allocation, the senate has not allocated any money there yet. I don't know if this is some sort of gamesmanship going on, but at the end of the day, that's going to be one of those negotiated type items and they come together to actually approve the budget. We're hoping it's going to come and land somewhere around what the house is recommending. That's what we're hoping for anyway. I can't guarantee that, but that's what we kind of informed y'all at the last budget meeting. That was about the number we were kind of proposing that was going to fall. So we're thinking that's what's going to happen, although the senate is writing the budget this year, so we do have to be cognizant of that. So I did want to share that with you to show you that the different runs of the budget and how each one is proposing those numbers to fall at the end of the day. The other thing of, I wanted to bring to your attention, we did get an opportunity to adjust our FTE forecast for this coming year. DOE opened it up. They saw a lot of changes in the fourth calculation. So they asked us, we got a one day notice. If you want to change your enrollment, you can. So we did. We actually upped it by about seventy basic students and twenty ESC invocational. And then we also made room for micro school. We only did seventy students for micro school. We didn't do the hundred. We thought we'd be a little bit cautious. So we did make those adjustments. Now, what's going to happen is when that number gets floated through the final budget numbers, that will probably, in all effect, take away our declining enrollment supplement. Not that much, it's about eighty thousand dollars. We'll make more on the basically, on the FTE than general rate. So I just wanted to let you know that. The other thing I wanted to bring your attention to, the last thing, there's a bill out there, House Bill seven zero three seven, which could have implications on our capital outlay millage that they are proposing that potentially the charter schools will get a piece of that. That has significant impact on us because, as you know, we've been over the years from two, one point seven five, now one point five mills. And our revenue has rapidly decreased based on the declining property values, the declining millage rate that we're actually allowed to levy. And if the charter schools are then able to take some of those dollars away, that's even less that we're getting. So we're talking about funding those capital projects. That could have an impact on some of that. So I tell you that, to be aware of that, get a hold of your legislators, inform them that we do not support that. At least, I don't want to speak for y'all, but I don't support that, that they're be taking dollars away from us. We're hoping that that potentially could die. I know the senate has a couple of bills out there that has some of this languaging in it for a companion bill, but we're hoping it maybe did make it to committee. But as I found out today, I did inquire, that bill still is out there and still hanging and still has some legs. So we want to try to do away with it. The input, we don't have the, it would not impact us as far as our ability to borrow money, but some districts have already levied their maximum to borrow. So they, if they took this away from them, that would even have some greater impacts. We're not in that position. The impact on us would be to lessen revenue. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So as you know, in two weeks, we'll come back to the budget workshop. We'll kind of update you on the general fund budget and our projections and what we think the budget's going to look like. We'll also introduce to you the capital budget and then what we believe the capital budget's going to look like and some of the projects we're going to bring forth to hopefully fund in that capital project, capital budget. Any questions?
I've got a question.
Yeah?
I know a mission last time. Has the projected property values, I know you said that you have been in contact with Les Cook, the property praiser. I know there were some things that were supposed to be coming up. Is anything, projected property values in the county, has he made any?
The latest projection is what's in the senate and the house is running about eight point eight billion, which is very close to what the governor had. It's not much.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't... The local property values?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, it is?
Yes, yes. If you look on, I'm sorry, on the school taxable value line?
Right.
Right.
The senate and the house have the latest values from the local property phasers, is a little bit more than what the governor had, and not much more.
And that is from?
Citrus County, yeah, eight point eight billion.
It looks awful.
Correct. Now, remember back in the heyday, it was like twelve point eight billion, so we're at about four billion over those years. Any other questions?
If we see, if we are given an idea for a program, what's the process for a board member when it comes to trying to get something on that budget, as opposed to budget item?
In our budget or the state budget?
No, you.
When we come to the budget workshop, it'll be an opportune time to discuss that, if we have a discussion amongst the board, your colleagues here, and we say, let's put it, let's fund it, put it in the budget, and then as we make sure we put it in there.
And also, we depend on what kind of project and what kind of program you're talking about, because some of that may be funded out of Title One or some other, some other federal funded budgets, or, so.
Yeah, we try to maximize the federal funds to put budget dollars out there before the general fund, as much as we can, we certainly are cognizant of some things we can't do, so.
And this is where we've also gone back to saying, that's the opportunity to sit down with the superintendent, have a conversation, say, is this something that is within, you know, if it's an educational issue having to do with ed services, Mr. Mullins is always available to sit down, if it has to do with operations, Mr. Blocker is always willing to, because just like you said, it may be a Title One issue where Title One dollars, Title Two dollars could be funded, and now we're not having to deal with coming out of our general funds dollars, which we always love.
You do front of my.
Supplanting is not a bad word, in my opinion. I know, I know. With that, board members, if there's no objection, we're going to have a five o'clock time certain, and then we've got quite a few things that are coming right after that, so what I'm going to ask if it's okay is if we can take a five minute or so break, that'll give us an opportunity to kind of regroup, and then if we can come back here right before five, and then we'll start our presentations, and then we'll go from there. So we are going to be in recess until five o'clock.